Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the council meeting for Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. Let the record show all councilors are present except for Councilor Hildebrand and Councilor Swiber. We'll look at add and deletes. Add consent agenda number one, number 14, number 15, and number 16. Delete consent agenda number 11. Add department and committee reports, number 4B and 5A. Add bids and quotes, number 1B and number 1C. Add license and permits, number 3, number 4, and number 5. Okay, could I have approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Councilor Fassell.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, approval of the minutes of Hibbing City Council meeting of July 19th, 9:10:23. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Counselor Wright, approval by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approve the minutes of the Hibbing City Council workshop meeting, July 19th, 2023. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Fassell.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move on to the consent agenda. Approve the accounts payable dated 7/26/2023, checks 175, number 175198 through 175292, in amount of $439,730.66. Approve 8/22/2023, checks number 175293 through number 175296, in amount of $1,069,149.49. Two, approve city council payroll for pay period ending 7/14/2023, checks number 168771 through 168782, in amount of $608,167.53. Three, approve the hire of Mitchell Anderson for full-time firefighter EMT position pending pre-employment contingencies. Four, approve the hire of Stephen Miller for the automated truck driver for sanitation department effective August 7th, 2023. Five, authorize opposing a full-time maintenance position in the city service department. Six, approve the updated drug, alcohol, and cannabis-free workplace policy effective August 1st, 2023. Seven, approve the background checks policy for personnel effective August 2nd, 2023. Eight, approve the updated employment policy effective August 2nd, 2023. Nine, approve auctioning of the 2012 Dodge Grand Caravan that was originally purchased with forfeiture funds. The auction funds will then go back into forfeiture account. Ten, approve invoices number 23-07-14 from Guy's Plumbing, in amount of $4,934 plus tax for parts and labor in the restrooms for the Hibbing Raceway. Twelve, 11 was crossed out. Twelve, set the next regular Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, August 16th, 2023, at 5:00 PM at City Hall in the Hibbing City Council Chambers. Thirteen, set the Hibbing City Council workshop for Wednesday, August 16th, 2023, following the Hibbing City Council meeting at City Hall in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. Fourteen, approve the fees we waived for North St. Louis County Habitat for Humanity Building Project at 418 Mitchell Avenue. Fifteen, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend a meeting to discuss the Highway 169 Beltline Corridor between Highway 37 and 13th Street on Thursday, August 10th, 2023, from 1:00 to 2:30 PM at the Hibbing Memorial Building. Sixteen, authorize the posting of a temporary full-time library specialist. These items were approved previous at the last meetings, and they are set the Joint Airport Authority meeting with the Chisholm-Hibbing Airport Authority for Monday, August 21st, 2023, at 6:00 PM in a conference room of the Administrator's Office at the Range Regional Airport. Authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the Hibbing's 130th Birthday Celebration at City Hall and its achievement introduction on Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023, 6:00 PM on the front lawn of Hibbing City Hall. Authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the ribbon-cutting and open house for I Clinic North on Friday, August 25th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, at 1311 East 34th Street in Hibbing. Last, set budget working session for 8:09, 8:23, and 8:30, all beginning at 5:00 PM. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'll now move on to public forum. It's nice to see everybody in the audience tonight, and we have four people that have reached out to speak tonight. And just so you know, generally it's a five minutes. We allot. I'll have a timer in front of me here. It is a listening session for what you have to say. We will listen to everything said, but we cannot make basically any decisions or make any motions regarding. But we certainly are very interested in what you have to say. So we'll start with David Ryan, if you want to go first. And once you're up there, Dave, I'll start the clock.
Thank you. Just got back to town hours ago, so I didn't have much time to prepare, but I wanted to, from what I've seen in the paper, shame on you for not maintaining this building. And there's certainly no reason to tear it down. City Council wanted to tear the Android down at one time, and the committee rose up, citizens, and saved that building and made it a very usable space. I'm sure there's ways that City Hall can be made more usable as well. Are there things that can be brought into the building if it's not used enough? How about the library? The library isn't a real classy building. Maybe that could move in here. The jail area, I don't know if that's being used for anything or not. That might be a section of the building that could be taken off and save the square footage. And, but there are ways to look at. There seem to be a lot of things listed that needed to be changed and improved, but they all don't need to be done at once. Important thing is to close the envelope, fix the roof, fix the outside structures, foundation. Hopefully you will move ahead to continue to maintain and save this building. It's a historic part of Hibbing. Thank you.
Dave, thank you. I have one comment. I think a lot of your points that you made are being discussed. I mean, many points that you made are within our discussion because this is preliminary, and it's awesome that we have this many people here that are concerned. That's democracy working. The information was put out there on purpose so that people can respond like you did. So anyways, again, thank you so much for what you had to say. Okay, we'll move on to Kathy Nyberg. Kathy, I should have did this with you too. Dave, would you please state your name and address before you speak? Thank you. Just so we have it on record.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kathy "Bugly" O.C. Nyberg. That's it?
Yes, just your address, please.
1286940 Road.
Thank you.
The first, I guess the first thing is thank you to Tom Whiteside for bringing this up on Facebook. That's where I saw it. I didn't even realize it was being discussed, what was to come of City Hall. So I'm glad and thankful that Tom did that, and hopefully more people will get involved. But the first thing I want to say is that I support keeping City Hall standing. City Hall is the heart and soul of our small town. Buildings like this are one of the reasons people live in a small town and not a big city. This building gives all of us a sense of place and a connection to the past. Just one second, I'm having problems with my phone, really. It's part of our history. It fills us with pride. It gives us a sense of connection to our neighbors. It stands as a way to honor our heritage and thank our city founders for all that they did. For me, this building represents the town that I love. And I'm sure you all know, if you took a poll, the vast majority of people in Hibbing would say "Don't knock down City Hall." People treasure this building. With that said, I do understand the great cost of making the necessary repairs, but I don't understand this. Why was the building not repaired and maintained over the years? Why are we at the point of deciding to tear it down, repair it for millions, or abandon it and build something new? If money had been put into the building over the last 25 years on a regular and scheduled basis, we wouldn't be looking at having to spend $14 million now. Was a decision made 20 or 25 years ago to just let the building go and let it crumble? Why weren't maintenance and repair done? At minimum, why on earth was a new roof not put on? Water is the biggest enemy to any building, and city officials knew about the water but chose to do nothing other than collect the water in buckets. Why? Even though it changes nothing as I stand here today, people still need to hear the answers to these tough questions. I think a good thing the city could do right now would be to take responsibility for their mistakes, say it, and ask the community for support in moving forward. So what would I like to see happen? Number one, repair, update, renovate, and remodel. Number two, move the Hibbing Historical Museum, which is in the basement of the Memorial Building, and the Bob Dylan Museum, which is in the basement of the library, to City Hall. Number two, move the Parks and Rec Department back into City Hall with the rest of the city offices. Next, use about half of the remodeled and renovated building for city offices and the other half for the museums. Lastly, of course, the central question is where does this money come from? $14 million is a lot of money. To acquire the estimated $14 million, as you all know very well, there's a number of funding sources that could be tapped. The next state bonding bill with the help of a good lobbyist, the IRRB, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, the U.S. Ambassador's Fund for Cultural Preservation, the National Park Service Historic Preservation Fund, and/or other foundations around the country that are dedicated to nothing but preserving and saving historic buildings. This would require a grant writer, of course. That would be minimal expense to possibly tap into those funds. In conclusion, I hope that all of you will do everything possible to save this wonderful building, which, as I stated earlier, is the heart and soul of our beloved Hibbing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Kathy. Okay, we'll move on to Christina. Again, Christina, name and address. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Christina Madurley. I live at 404 East 22nd Street in Hibbing. I'd like to take this opportunity to share what I think about City Hall's future. Born and raised in Hibbing and currently living in the City Hall neighborhood, I care about what happens to this stunning building. The last thing I want is for it to be put into a position where it sits vacant or meets the wrecking ball, which is what I believe will happen without City Hall being located in here, if not right away, a bit down the road. Because City Hall staff takes up just a portion of the space this building provides, I think it would be wise for the city to consider filling the space with other Hibbing-centric entities. After reviewing the Steering Committee draft recommendation page on the immediate needs summary document, I find that some of the points made for moving on are simply ones that seem to be solvable or even reasons to stay. First, it seems that the largest factor in the way is the cost of restoring this place. By the sounds of it, the city is considering building new for an estimated $7 million. To stay here and fix things would cost an additional $7 million. My hope is that grants and additional funding can make up that second $7 million. Although the Steering Committee said it's time to move on, this taxpayer is not convinced that it is. Moving on should not be considered until all avenues of payment for restoration have been exhausted, and I would like to know what grants and other funding sources have been sought. City Hall being over 100 years old was another reason given for moving on. 100-plus years old signals more of a reason to keep it, in my opposing opinion. People who come back enjoy the nostalgia a visit to town brings and what will be left for them to visit. Others come to see where Bob Dylan grew up, and you can bet they also check out the city's landmarks and think about how these sites were also part of Dylan's days here. But that will be impossible for them to see if we just do away with our old structures. And for the people living here, the craftsmanship and character of older buildings are things not found in the current or recently built structures. Lastly, the environmental impact of building new would be greater than restoring what we already have. Wouldn't it be wise to keep that in mind as well? Once this place is damaged beyond repair, it will be too late. Let's not make that mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. We move on to Tom Whiteside.
Mayor, council, my name is Tom Whiteside. I'm a resident of Hibbing at 122012th Avenue East. So I'm here today because the City Steering Committee on July 19th recommended that it's, quote, "time to move on," unquote, in the City Hall building and recommended divesting from it. My understanding that the Steering Committee has told the council that you need to decide within three months what to do with the building, and we are currently in the community feedback period. That's why I think so many folks showed up. Today, I'd like to advocate that the council slow down the process and get a second opinion. I would recommend reaching out to organizations that have experience in restoring historic buildings and see if they have ideas on additional funding sources or cost-saving measures. I would also recommend that the city reach out to our state and federal representatives to find an exhaustive list of grants, low-interest loans, and bonding bill possibilities available before deciding to divest from the building. I'd be happy to help with the process any way I can. And for some of you, you might not know, I worked for the U.S. House of Representatives before taking over as the union representative and annoying everybody here. But one of the things that we did when I was in that office was we had this agency called the Congressional Research. Basically, if you reach out to your representative, they can then take your requests, send it to this organization within the House of Representatives, and they, if you ask them for an exhaustive list of grants and loans available, I mean, I don't know, maybe the Build Back Better program has some available funding. You know, there's ADA accessibility issues. Maybe there's some funding under that. This building's on the historic register since 1981. Is there funding under that? I know that the IRRB, while they're not in a position to completely take this over and care for every city, there's maybe a couple dollars there that you could maybe get a grant writer or something along those lines. So anyways, I hope you'll maybe slow down a little bit and look at the whole horizon, see if there's other funding sources out there. And like I said, I'd be happy to help any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I thank you all for speaking, and this is not going to be a rushed decision. Everything is out there. Mr. Prusinski, our whole, the whole information done by ICS is online now, correct?
It is. So the slide deck from our last city council meeting is on there. I think there are a couple of pieces that are missing, some of the stuff from earlier on. What we've been trying to do is add it as people have a chance to look at the slide deck from the last meeting. So we're trying to get a lot of detail on there so people have an opportunity to take a look at that. The other thing I'll mention to everybody is, the next step is we'll have a calendar of events between now and the end of the year, so there'll be some listening sessions. We're going to open up an idea exchange that'll be on our website, and then we'll link it to our Facebook site along with some of the other social media platforms. We're planning some tours of the building so people can have a firsthand look and a few listening sessions, but also we'll be looking at the library as well as the memorial building, so we'll invite you all to be part of that process.
Thank you. I think what's important is, a council has not made any decisions. This is just information coming forward so that it's available to us. We also want it available to you, and that's why it was put online. That, Tom was at our last meeting, was great, and he went through Facebook to get the information out there. I mean, as I mentioned earlier, that's the transparency we need for moving city politics forward and city information forward. So no decisions have been made. I appreciate everything that everybody said. There's been some great comments, some great ideas. A lot of them haven't thought about. A lot of them, a couple, I know a few I have, I think were good suggestions. So that's why there will be public hearings and stuff, so everything is digested thoroughly before any decisions are being made. Yes, there was a three-month timeframe that they asked. That was, I wouldn't say directed by ICS and the information and the group that was working on this, but their, you know, their process is to move forward as smooth and as quickly as possible. Our job as a council is to take our time and to make sure when we do make a decision, we make the right decision for this community, and that will include input from the public. So again, I appreciate you all being here tonight, and I thank you for your support and your concern and your passion for this building and the city. Thank you. All right. That being said, any other councilor have anything they want to say?
Other than thank you, no.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That being said, we'll move on to department and committee reports. Building official, Mr. Green.
Mayor and council, offering resolution number 230801 to approve a plat exemption from PNF development. What they're doing is taking three parcels and making two larger parcels. They do have a survey. They met all the requirements, and the planning commission recommended approval of this plat.
Okay. Hearing what Mr. Green had to say about plat exemption, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fassell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. B, Pat.
This is a resolution 230802, another plat exemption for David Rupucci regarding property that he owns. It's over by McDonald's. The unusual part is, it's not a continuous piece of property. There's a small section that's part of this parcel, and we wanted to make that small section and the one that, the larger one where he wants to sell his home into two parcels. It is recommended to approve. There is a condition. Since a small parcel will not meet what minimum lot size is, that can only be sold to a neighboring property owner. And I went over that with City Attorney Borland, and that would be a condition.
And that was approved also by?
Yes.
Okay. So we have, Mr. Green's asked for a resolution approving a plat exemption. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fassell.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Pat. City Clerk Deputy Administrator Candy Sepala.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As we've discussed at multiple workshops over the last few months, we've been updating all of our services and user agreements, and we would like to add this one to that list. We're trying to professionalize all of our agreements and getting them updated. So I'm asking, or I'm requesting approval to allow me to go out for an RFP for animal management and operations services. We have been, I'd like to place this request on our Facebook and our website, but I'd also like to put it in the Misabi Daily News. We'd like to have individuals have their proposals to us by September 15th, and you'll notice on the packet that I gave you, it says August 25th. I just don't think that that's long enough, and we want to make sure that we, you know, put it out there. So I just feel that we need to allow more time for the proposers to submit their information.
Okay. Thank you for that update. So City Clerk Deputy Administrator Candy Sepala is looking for advertisement requests for proposal for services for the Range Regional Animal Shelter.
It's just for animal services.
Animal services. Very good. All right. Wishes of the council.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Whitney.
Candy, who, like, the people that are out there now that run it, or what's happening with them?
No, there isn't anything good or bad. We're just trying to professionalize all of our agreements, and so the right thing to do is just to go out for an RFP. We're, right now, we pay a lot of money. We give them a building. We just want to see if that's something that they want to look at, because we've been trying to get this contract settled since 2016 with them, and I just feel that it's time to just professionalize it a little more on our end, on anyone else who would like to put in an RFP.
So is Range Regional Animal Rescue, is that the group or?
Yep. So they have a board, and normally they all do, so it doesn't matter if you're in any city. They all have a board, but they just, I think we just need to make sure that we're professionalizing and getting information that we need, whether it's financials or volunteering their background checks and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
I just want to make one comment before we do this. I think it's important that we move forward with getting solid operations out there. It's not that they haven't been good. I think they've done some great things. It's just been maybe a direction or maybe a contract, whatever needs to be cleaned up. But I also want to add that our responsibility as a city is that building, and we have not held up our responsibilities regarding that building over the years. So if we're going to request that of the people that are going to operate it, then we have to do due diligence. So I will make sure that happens.
I agree.
If there's a new RFP, I will make sure that we are doing our job out there. All right? Yes, any other discussion?
Thank you. I would just like to add, thank you, Candy, for taking under this huge project here, because it has been a lengthy process, and there's been a lot of due diligence on the part of the council, a lot of conversations that we've had. So this is great. So I hope we receive several RFPs back and make a good decision for our taxpayers. Thank you. And I just, I also want to, I don't want to call out Nick Arrola, but he has been really doing a great job with other agreements, and that's why I pulled him in, so he's been an integral part of it. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Candy.
Thank you.
City Attorney, Mr. Borland.
Mayor, members of the council, city staff asked me to craft an ordinance, so it's on here for discussion only and for your review and information this evening, not to take any action. This is a draft ordinance that would propose that the city would be banning smoking of any kind in any public parks of the city and within 50 feet of any city building entrance. That's what the heart of this is, whether you're smoking cigarettes, cannabis, hemp, electronic vaping, all of those would be banned under this attempted draft. It's only for discussion purposes this evening. It's just really for you guys to get it, look at it, process it, and probably get back to either myself or Mr. Prusinski or Miss Sepala has to whether or not you'd like to go ahead and have this posted at a future meeting with regard to taking it up as an ordinance.
Okay, so you just want some open discussion right now?
Only if you wanted to tonight, because I don't know if you've really had a chance to see it much at this point in time, but we wanted to get it in front of you anyway so you could start to process or think about it.
Very good.
Great.
After what Andy just had to say, does anybody have any comments? After what Andy just had to say, does anybody have any comments? I personally feel you did a great job bringing this forward. And I think the biggest thing that I want to see because the state has authorized legalized cannabis is that we have consistency throughout our region. I want to go, you know, I want to see what other towns are doing, and we're consistent. Not that we can't lead, but it's a lot easier if the region is pretty similar in what they do from, I would think, from a point of view for enforcement and for the users. So any other discussion? All right, thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Mayor.
We'll move on to City Administrator, Mr. Przynski, administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, city council, I already went over the calendar of events for the public engagement for our facility studies, so I won't go into that again. I'll go to 4B if I may.
Yeah.
I would offer up Resolution 230803, which is applying for and accepting funds from the IRRR Mindland Reclamation Grant Fund. This is a project that is a collaboration between the City of Hibbing, Hibbing Taconite Company, and BAR Engineering, and it's actually a forest reclamation project. So I would offer up the resolution. I can stand for answers, otherwise consideration and action will be appreciated.
All right. Hearing what Mr. Przynski had to say regarding accepting funds from the IRRR. Any just, motion please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion of Councilor Hoffman-Sockman, support.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. More discussion or questions for Greg? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Greg. Police Chief, Mr. Estee.
I'm here, council, good evening. Before you is policy number forty-five. This will be our vehicle use policy within the police department. We went over this pretty extensively a couple weeks ago at our working session. Had Flaherty and Hood look it over as well. They gave us our blessing on that. So looking for council approval to move forward with that policy.
Okay. Hearing what Mr. Estee Chief had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion from Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like, thank you. I would just like to say thank you to Chief Estee for, we're on policy number forty-five. So you've been very busy writing and getting the department in good order and everything, and so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Bits and quotes, we move on to City Engineer, Mr. Story.
Mayor, council, since our jet truck that we ordered will not be here until the end of 2024, we've been going through our existing jet truck, which is about twelve years old, making sure that's in good working condition. We did replace the two suction tubes on it. The next piece is the filter body weldment. Attaches a quote from McQueen Equipment in the amount of $4,649.89. I'm asking for council approval. We will have our mechanics do the install.
Okay, we'll save on the labor, very good. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. A B, Jesse.
Mayor, council, attaches a quote from S Brothers for frames and grates for manholes and catch basins. This is a budgeted item. The amount is $6,018.80, and I'm asking for council approval.
Hearing what Mr. Story has to say, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. C.
Mayor, council, here about a week ago, we had a forest main break south of Latonia, north of the tracks at the end of Fifth. We tried to dig it with our excavator. We were about six feet short of reaching the forest main. So we had Begolos and Sons come there, and they did the repair. It was right off the edge of the railroad tracks, a very difficult spot to dig. So we had them do the repair, and there's an invoice attached for $12,741. I'm asking for approval.
Okay, we're asking for support for sewer repair. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, council.
Jesse, since it was so close to the tracks, the railroad tracks, do they have any liability themselves then for this?
From the edge of the tracks to where the dig was, it was about fifty feet. So we did, I reached out to the railroad company. I think I left three voicemails, they never got back to me. So we did the repair. It's within the railroad right of way, but they do not have any liability with this. No, we have a casing pipe that crosses underneath the railroad track, but this part of the pipe, no, there's no liability there.
Thank you for trying. Thank you.
Hearing no more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Finance Director, Ms. Molner.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Item A is to authorize the execution of a thirty-six-month quote from UKG for payroll, HR, and timekeeping software and the necessary equipment and accessories. The city has had a team of four to five of us that has worked since last October towards finding a human capital management solution that would best suit the needs of our organization. Our current software is very basic, and it requires us to input employees' time and payroll manually, which creates room for lots of errors. We watched demonstrations from three vendors, and of the three, UKG had the optimal solution. The HR, timekeeping, and payroll modules would replace existing modules in our current software, INCODE. The new software would add solutions for both scheduling as well as performance tracking. This implementation was a budgeted expense for 2023. We had budgeted $40,000 towards the project implementation. We budgeted additional money towards INCODE upgrades that we didn't complete in 2023, so I'd like to repurpose those budgeted funds towards the annual subscription costs. Once this system is fully operational, I'd be able to cancel our INCODE payroll, time entry, and HR modules, and the savings from canceling would be put towards the annual subscription costs going forward. I'm asking if city council would approve the quote.
Okay, hearing what Ms. Molner had to say. Wishes of the council.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Sheena, you mentioned, you know, we'll be making up in savings and in time. What is the cost? You mentioned some figures in there, but what is the actual cost for buying the software and making it functional?
So the, I mean, the implementation was, I think it was around $30,000. I don't have the quote right in front of me right now, but that would be for the implementation of it and installation. And then going forward, it'll run us about $25,000 a year. But the savings in what we have now would be around 12. So while it's going to cost us more operationally, we're getting more modules and more stuff than what we had now. We didn't have the scheduling, didn't have the performance pieces. We also didn't have the time clocks that go along with timekeeping, so everything was manual. So this solution will definitely pay us back when it comes to the return on our investment.
So it'll solve your issues and save you about $12,000, she just said.
Right, well, when we cancel INCODE, that'll offset $12,000 of the annual cost.
Very good. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheena.
Yep, thanks.
License and permits. Approve the raffle permit application request of Hibbing Chisholm Youth Hockey to hold their raffle on Saturday, January twelfth or twentieth, 2024, at Missaudon North College, Hibbing Campus. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Two, approve the raffle permit application request of the benevolent and protective order of Elks of United States of America, Hibbing Lodge Number 1022, to hold their bingo on Wednesday, September thirteenth, twentieth, twenty-seventh, and of 2023 at the DUU. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Three, approve raffle permit application request of Hibbing Chisholm Youth Hockey to hold the raffle on Thursday, January eighteenth, at the Palmer's Tavern. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Number four, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Chisholm Youth Hockey to hold their bingo on Wednesday, October eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth at the DUU. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Number five, approve the special event permit application of Brian Feiberg to have Toivo's Pub host Reeves Fest on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, 2023. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.